Donation. I will take motion to approve consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Dave.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
You.
Yes.
Lisa.
Yes.
Randy.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so that passes. Thank you, everybody.
Greg, I'm sorry, who seconded? I didn't catch it.
That was Randy.
Okay, and we did have a few people sign up for public comment.
Excellent, let me pull that up, thank you. I don't see that. Robyn, do you have the?
I do, hold on, let me just. And I can see if I can see them, so. Karen Clement. Dale Gates and Chaz Sexton. So just.
Right, so Karen. We just threw a lot of talk, Robyn, right? Is that what we push? What I'll have to do.
Yeah, I don't see. Karen Clement has her hand raised.
Okay, so Karen, so we'll do, we'll do public comment. Again, I ask the folks, keep their comments to, to three minutes, address all matters through the chair, and then we'll see if we need to refer things for follow-up. And unless it's on the agenda, we won't be able to get into discussion, but we'll obviously take, take the feedback. So, Ms. Clement, we'll turn it over to you, and I appreciate you taking the time to speak to us.
Can you hear me?
We can, there was a bit of an echo, but we can hear you. I think we lost her.
Yeah.
All right, is Dale Gates on? Don't see him. Mr. Carnegie.
Just because we know that we have that person that wants to talk, and somehow they got dropped, would we be able to table this for a little bit?
Yep, we kind of was hoping she would join right back, but we can move on to the reports and information. Superintendent Morgan?
I don't have anything until we discuss the budget later on in the meeting.
All right. We'll move on to new business if, if Ms. Clement joins, I would like to pause if we could and move to her comments, but first, under new business, we have the 2023 high school graduation, graduation rain dates. And Lisa, I know you'd asked to have this on the agenda, so why don't you speak to this?
Yes. Um, we'd just like to possibly move that there not be a rain date, and it just be moved inside the buildings if it does have bad weather. And just have it that June 2nd date. And I think this would help parents to just have that one date and not have to plan future dates, as it was kind of confusing for last year with the options of rain, and it was, it was stressful for everyone. So that's, that's a proposal. Any questions?
Randy?
My first, an obvious question is, do we have the room indoors? We are allowing students to have a certain number of tickets outside on the field. I don't know how many that is these days. Where would be, I mean, would we be able to accommodate that many people if all tickets were used indoors? It's the whole reason why, in the first place, years and years ago, we had it down at Pittsburgh State, was because of the number of tickets that we can offer to the students, and we couldn't fit it into the high school then. So is there room?
There's a proposal to use the gym as the graduation stage and allow the students and their families to be present, and then use the auditorium and the lunch area or the cafeteria area for overflow. And that would allow them to be put on the video screens to be viewable. The tickets are up for debate yet, because every year we've had different plans since we pulled it back to the high school. So I think last year it was eight tickets, is that right, Brad, per graduate?
I believe it was eight, and I do, you know, if we do move it inside, if that's what has to happen, obviously, I think we need to decide what forces the event inside. Is it just rain? Or is it, you know, torrential rains and/or thunder, lightning, things like that? You know, if it's just rain, you know, I'd like to hear from, you know, people as to what they think the best option would be. The only concern I have, and it's something that we could easily fix, of course, from an optics standpoint, it's not great to have the stage where myself, the school committee chair and principal is sitting, being covered. But that would need to be covered because of the microphone and the speakers and things of that nature would need to likely be protected as well if it is raining outside. But I'm pretty confident that we could certainly fit, I think, the same number of people, but the people that would actually be physically present in the gym, that that's not something that we could make work. We could probably allow parents and siblings, I would guess, and then everyone else would likely have to be located in the auditorium or the dining commons for live stream.
That's something to think about, is how many guests per student will fit into the gym, and then how are you going to ensure that every student has, if a guest came, that they have at least one in the gym? So again, I'd like to see those numbers, but this is just one of those things that, you know, a lot of places that do outdoor graduations have to plan a contingency for. I'm not sure what other schools do. I'm not sure if they have combinations inside, or if they split it up like this with a screen. I'm not sure what common practice is.
It is something, I'll just add, it's something that I did have to do in my former district. It was certainly, it was tight. We did not have, it was a situation where it literally rained Friday, Saturday, and it was scheduled to rain on Sunday as well, so we went with an indoor graduation on a Sunday, on a Saturday, excuse me. And at that point in time, we had space very similar to what North Middlesex has. We did not have an auditorium, but we did have a large dining area that we're able to stream, and we had close to 500 graduates. So certainly had more graduates as well. So certainly something, if the committee would like to explore this, I'm confident that we can fit everyone in and certainly give everyone, I would think, at least two tickets to see, to watch it live in the gym, and everyone else would be able to watch it live, you know, through streaming. Again, whether it be the dining commons and/or the auditorium.
And is the high school administration on board with doing it indoors, and have the students been asked?
I know the high school administration is on board. We're actually, we actually did start to get a lot of input from parents, so I'm not sure if the students have been asked, but parents are certainly asking. And it's, it has been, it's something that's come up every year, where parents would like to have the one date. We can certainly explore it more. Reason we're bringing it to the committee, more or less, is really because it is a calendar change and would need the committee's approval to make an adjustment to the calendar at this point, and it's something that Ms. Martin came to me with, because Project Graduation has some concerns as well with having to reschedule for rain dates and things of that nature. So that's why it was put on the agenda this evening. Ms. Martin, did I miss anything on that?
No, it's all, all good.
Dave, did you still have a question?
No, my question was answered.
June?
Yeah, I would be interested in getting parent input and student input before school committee makes a decision on this. As a parent of a student graduating next year, I would prefer the outdoor venue and the possible different dates. That's my personal preference. Some parents might, you know, prefer a single date and the indoor option, but but I think we do, it's, you know, graduation is a very, very big deal for these kids, so I don't think we should make any changes to it lightly. So I would like some feedback from families before, before we make any decisions on this.
I guess, just my opinion right now is that we should try to have it outdoors more than a singular date. Like June was saying, it, it's a really important thing, and being able to fit people into, you know, being able to barely cram enough people into the gym is a little scary for me. Is there any other indoor places on, not even just on that campus, but in the district that we could possibly think about using?
I don't believe there's anything in the district that would, that would satisfy a space that's larger than what we currently have. I know we did use to rent out Pittsburgh, that became somewhat costly. Some of, there are other schools somewhere close by that utilized the Songa Center, and that's extremely expensive. I believe it's pretty well north of $10,000 now, just for the use, and it's a very quick turnaround. Another thing we can certainly look at, and again, I'm not sure what the capacity is, but the venue that comes to mind would be the new music center in Groton down the road, to see if that is something, then they actually have a couple of, a couple of spaces in that facility that allow for indoor and outdoor at the same time, where people are outdoors and people are indoors, and they're able to see the stage and hear what's happening. Just, I don't think it's something we could work out for this year. And I'm not even sure that they're fully open yet.
Have, have we ever looked at the cost of putting a tent over the track, over the field?
We have not. Again, certainly something that we could, that we could look into. I've seen situations where a hundred graduates have been under a tent with their, with their families, but it is somewhat, it's managed as to how many people are able to attend from each family, which can certainly get tricky. Just because then you're really, then you're not talking about the bleachers, you're talking about really making sure that everyone is under the tent, because anyone that's in the bleachers won't be able to see what's happening. But again, certainly something that we could talk about. Again, I've been in situations where we've had to move indoors, we've had to limit tickets to two, and it was one year where we can only allow two spectators, and again, that was livestreamed just because of space, and we ran out of options, and then there was another time where we went indoors and allowed families to bring in six. And again, that was about 500 graduates. So I've seen it done a couple of different ways. Another concern that's always out there with families is that many have a venue rented, whether it be a reservation set at a restaurant, and those reservations tend to, you know, on a rain date, tend to come before the actual graduation itself, if we have to delay it. So that's been another concern that comes directly from parents, is that, you know, we have a celebratory dinner planned with family from out of town, and now we're having that celebratory dinner before they, my son or daughter actually walks across the stage to get their diploma.
And I know that there are parties planned, I mean, and that's what parents, you know, they want their parties planned ahead of time, and I know giving them one date would help them.
Tom, you have a question or comment?
Yeah, no, I would just say, not only, you know, your dinner's planned, but I know for a lot of people that when they fly in, family members, you know, it's, it's like a quick turn, and so, you know, if they're planning on, you know, multiple days, they may not be able to make it. So just in terms of planning, I know that's difficult, too.
So I just, I was up to comment. One, I, I never liked the idea of live streaming. Because I know it's an important day, and people want to see it in person and not watch it on the TV, so that is a concern of mine. But I do, I think, June, you're the one that asked about public input. Is there a way we could put a survey out there and just maybe put what the two or three options are and put it on the website and just have people provide us their input and see what, what's what, because I mean, I agree from a planning perspective, obviously, one day is significantly easier, whether it's for travel, whether it's for parties, people going on vacation, whatever happens to be. So it'd be good to hear from folks because it's going to impact them, obviously. I still have a question. Does everybody agree, any objections to that? And not? I guess no motion was made, so there's nothing to move on, but. Thoughts on when to revisit this? Again, being cognizant, if we want to change it for this year, that we need to give some notices, our next meeting, April 10th, is that enough time to get survey responses and some input?
I think so.
I think it would need to be with the first Friday in June, is, I forget the exact date, is graduation.
It's June 2nd.
2nd, yeah. It is coming up quick, I will be there, so.
I mean, I honestly think that if it were to be, if people were to vote in favor of what, of what Ms. Martin is putting out there, I think that people have already planned on that day being the day. I think it's going to be, it could alter things if, if they look at options that we, you know, haven't thought about. Or an option where, you know, we move inside and then we don't have the number of tickets. So we can certainly work with Mr. McMahon, Mr. Edmonds of the high school, to see what exactly, obviously, following capacity guidelines, what the capacity is in those, in those areas, to make sure we're able to maximize the number of people that students want to bring. And again, it's possible the gym may not even be the best space to have it. There may be another space at the high school, whether it be the dining commons or the auditorium, that may make more sense to maximize the space. So we can certainly talk about that with him, and we can also look at the tent idea as well.
All right. I guess then I'll, just to make an official take a motion to table this to our April 10th meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Lisa and Dave. Any further questions, comments? All right, Dave?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Well, yes, so that's unanimous. Thank you. We'll talk, finish that discussion April 10th. I'm going to go back to public comments and see if we can get Karen back on the line here. All right, Karen, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Sorry about the glitch. I'm not very good at computers. For those of you with children in the school district, you may have or may have not noticed that recently no community events have been emailed to you via the weekly newsletter. After at least 30 years of cooperation with the districts, three towns, and the nonprofits in them, the superintendent of school is now refusing to include community events. I do understand that school information comes first, but I do believe that there is still room in this weekly emails for our communities. Many families do not buy local publications, or are not on social media, or allow their children to be on it. The school district has been a valuable source for distributing news for Townsend's Townwide Cleanup, Earth Day, and Townsend Recreation. The Friends of the Townsend Library, VFW Auxiliary, and TESA Soccer have all suffered due to this decision. Prior to this new directive, I would request via the superintendent of schools, and I would receive an approval. Once approved, it was my responsibility to send it out to the district schools. I realize that the school committee is not the governing board in this issue. However, I would appreciate that you refer this back to the superintendent of schools and hope of a reversal of his current decision. Thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you, Ms. Clement, I appreciate that. Yeah, so I think, as alluded to, this, this isn't in the purview of of the school committee, but I do understand that there's, there's value, what, what, I mean, my personal opinion, I'm open to the committee's thoughts as well, is to, is to find an alternative, and that doesn't have to be that the school district does this, but I'd like some conversations to happen on how, whether that continues, revisited, or there's just an alternative solution. I think there's there's possibly some opportunity there. So, Randy?
Not, not that I don't want to discuss this, but if we're going to be fair to everybody else that we have during public communications, well, before now and going forward, we usually say that unless it's on the agenda, this committee will not discuss it in this meeting. That the public comment is for us to hear the concerns, but again, if it wasn't on the agenda, we're not supposed to have discussions.
Yeah, I guess I'm more asking for agreement to refer this for further discussion, not to have the discussion here.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I hear you're saying you wanted a discussion, so, like I said, I have plenty of opinions on the matter, but I'm trying to follow.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, should this go to policy? Should this, we ask the administration to revisit? Should we ask them to look into it, and maybe not revisit, but just look into it and come back? That, I guess that's the kind of dialogue I want. Where does this go next?
Okay.
Sorry, thank you for the clarification, Randy. All right, no one has opinions?
I do.
Well, there are June and then Lisa.
Yeah, I mean, I do have opinions on this, and I, without getting into it too much, think that the school and community should work together as much as possible. So that being said, if we need to put this on our agenda for next meeting, I am all for that. But if we don't think it falls into our purview, then, you know, either way, I think it should be revisited, one place or another.
Thank you, June and Lisa.
I do think that it could be taken to policy to discuss, and then brought forward. Randy, do you?
I have to review the policy on, especially the solicitations in school, I believe, policy and see what it says. What I was going to say is, I'm sure the superintendent had his reasons for making this policy change. Maybe we can refer back to the superintendent to see if there's a compromise to be made. Maybe a separate email sent out, not with his information, but a separate one from the schools with any community events or something like that, that can be done, just to kind of compromise with this, because, again, trying to work with the community, but also serve the needs of the district.
What, when is the next policy meeting, Randy? Not to jump ahead on the agenda, but.
It is coming up this week, no, next week, it's April 6th, maybe.
Right.
It's familiar.
So could.
No, that's fine, it's, sorry, wrong one.
It's too many.
Looking when policy is. Robyn, can you help me out here?
I, I, I was just, so, we talked about it possibly being tomorrow, but we haven't, you and I haven't been able to touch base to go over the, the agenda, so. You know, so I had sent you an email, you probably didn't get it yet.
I apologize.
No, to see if you wanted to do it next week, so.
Okay, well, we will be setting it up, and I can certainly take a look at putting this on when we do the agenda. Thank you, Rob.
You're welcome, Randy.
Maybe superintendent, yourself, Robyn, and others, I guess, kind of gather the reasons, and I know there were, there were some significant issues that led to the decision, so maybe do some of that research, bring that to policy, and then we'll let them kind of figure out where we go from there, and make that recommendation back to the committee. Does that work for everybody? Brad, is that good with you?
Sure, sure.
All right.
I would just, I would just add, just, just to clarify, it was not that the district opted not to communicate community events. There were some significant, significant issues that were potentially going to become legal issues for the district. So I just wanted, wanted to put that out there. It was not a decision that was taken lightly. And it was a difficult decision, but again, it, there was potential for not just legal issues, but potential legal action against the school district.
Well, hopefully, we can find a compromise that's going to avoid any of that in the future, and both sides will be happy with it.
All right, so we'll have the administration, you know, maybe provide some detail on those issues to policy, and we'll let the policy committee figure out where to go from there, and that, that could be implement a policy that prevents some of those issues. It could be, we go back to what we did, it could be, we're going to continue not doing it, but we'll let, let the policy committee do that, and if, again, people have comments from the public about that, feel free to send those to the committee, and we'll, we'll take those under advisement. I do not see the other two folks who signed up for public comment, so if they are on, please raise your hand, or or we will move on, so I don't see the names. All right, so we'll continue on with the rest of new business. We have the 2023-24 school calendar, Superintendent Morgan?
Hi, Greg, so, thank you. I just had to turn off a printer that was running next to me, I apologize. So we actually had a couple of options that we were exploring, just again, with an eye on really June, just because it does become difficult, and I think, you know, we're certainly going to see that this year with additional snow days. The value of going deep into June is a problem, and always has been, in my opinion, for students and staff. Just to find value in it, you know, with all of the state assessments being over, and, you know, the nice weather outside, it, there just seems to be a loss of value in some ways, again, as you go deeper and deeper into June. That being said, we did end up moving forward just a regular, traditional calendar with the February and April vacations. The only thing, a couple, really, I guess you would call a change, would be moving the parent conferences in March to one week later to potentially avoid snow days, just because we encountered those this year, and my hope is that by moving them a week later, we'll have weather like we have planned for this week, as opposed to getting 30-plus inches of snow in parts of the district. So, and again, that was just an issue that we had to, that we had to manage, but again, it's more of a traditional calendar. Graduation, again, is the first Friday. It does come late, because it's the, on June 7th, first Friday in June, and everything else pretty much stays the same. We are going to work on putting more pre-K events on the calendar as well, especially with regard to what happens with pre-K on those early release days for parent conferences. But outside of that, again, it's just a regular, standard calendar with the standard vacation, standard vacation weeks and days.
Did anyone see my screen? I was trying to share the calendar.
You keep disappearing.
Yeah, okay. I don't know what's happening.
But it's really, I don't believe, Robyn, there was nothing else that was really different. It's basically
No.
a copy of this year's calendar, same number of early release days, similar start dates, everything pretty much is the same, we're just moving it, moving it into next. moving it into next year.
Any questions or comments from the committee? And any feedback from the public that we've received regarding the calendar? That anyone's aware of?
No, and it was also shared with the association, also teachers association. There was, there was no feedback. There was definitely feedback. Again, we were looking at a potential alternative calendar and there was just too many obstacles with that one. So it was more something along the lines of having a couple of long weekends in February and April and having a week off in March to try to get as many days in during those months as we could and try to balance out the month of March with the other months. But again, it's, it could create childcare issues for staff in the district, childcare issues. You know, we have those now with staff in the district whose children are in New Hampshire and they have different vacation weeks than we do. So it would be somewhat of a trade off. But again, we decided to go forward with just the traditional calendar.
All right.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to the superintendent. It's very easy just to kind of keep doing the same thing and not thinking about what could be better or changed. And I want to just commend you for just trying to think outside the box, even though you didn't find a solution for this year. Keep looking for things that would be better.
Thank you. No, and we, and we did get some questions about the other calendar. I know we had initially shared it with you and it just looked like it was going to be too much and again, just opted for this one. But thank you.
Any other questions from anybody?
I'll move to accept the calendar as presented for next year.
Randy, June, any other questions or comments? All right. Seeing none. Let's see, check with the calendar. Dave?
Yep.
Jessica?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So that is unanimous. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
And last item under new business, we have travel abroad. What was? Miss Chapel. Oh, yes. All right. Thank you, Sheryl. There you go.
Hear me?
We can hear you.
Great. Paul Thompson's here too, if you don't mind putting him on too, so he can chime in if possible.
Absolutely.
Great.
Hello.
Good evening. All right. Yeah. So I think you're here to talk about idea for international trips. And if you want to kind of give us the overview of what you're looking at and we'll take the discussion from there.
Great. Yeah. So how many minutes would you like us to take?
We'll start with four or five at the most, just to kind of give us an overview. And I'm sure the committee will have questions and we'll get into some discussion.
All right. Sounds great. We do have a PowerPoint. I sent it to you and Robin. If one of you wants to share that, that would be super.
Robin, are you able to share? I've tried to share. I don't know how many windows right now and it has not worked for me. And you're talking about the PDF, Dawn, is that the?
Yeah, there's a PDF.
Okay. I can try again.
Yeah, I'm not seeing where I could share it from my screen here. But that's okay. While you're trying to figure that out, I can go ahead and start in the interest of time. So our proposal is we would like to take the kids who are interested to England and Scotland. We want to do a UK trip. It would be over April vacation in 2024. It would be through EF Tours. So the goal would be to do sort of a combination sightseeing and educational tour that would be a guided tour that start, oh, can you see? Is the screen coming up? Let's see. It says that you're, I'm viewing your screen, but it's just a black box. Oh, well, we put together a really nice little PowerPoint for you.
I can see if I can make you.
You guys can see it.
I can make you a panelist and see if it's going to ask you to rejoin in just a second. So if you just click that button, you might be able to share.
Okay.
And then you should be able to share. We'll cross our fingers.
All right. Can you hear me?
Yep, I can hear you and I can, I can see the sides. So I think.
Great. I might even be able to get a video going here too. There we go. Okay. All right. So yeah, so here's our, so here's our plan. Let's go to England and Scotland. Let me see if I can even make that bigger for you. Nope. Okay, I tried. So the plan would be, oh, wait a second. Maybe it was better when I couldn't share it. All right. So the idea is that we'd be going to England and Scotland. I don't know if you guys can see that, but we would be flying into Edinburgh, Scotland, spending two nights in Scotland and then heading to Yorkshire for one night, Birmingham for one night, Stratford upon Avon, visit Shakespeare's house, Oxford, and then spending three days in London with an option for the kids to go on a separate trip to see Stonehenge. So I'm not sure what you guys can see, but can you, can you see this scrolling through?
Yep, I can.
Okay, great. So there's kind of an overview of our agenda and in the interest of time, I won't go through the day by day unless you want me to. But the meal, so what's going to be included would be the flights, the tour guide. Actually, hang on, I'm on the wrong page. There we go. The, the flights, the round trip airfare, the hotel stays. They said it's like the equivalent of like Holiday Inn accommodations. They'd be, there'd be regional meals for breakfast and dinner that would be included. The tour director would be with us 24/7. The transportation would be included. The local guides would be included. The sightseeing would be included and then the entrances to the landmarks and attractions other than the two extra trips that would be optional additional expenses for the kids. So that would all be included. The families would be responsible for passports, visas if they're not US citizens, baggage fees, tips, if, if that's applicable, and then snacks and lunches. So the, we actually spent a lot of time with the tour people talking about safety and liability and support and what happens if kids get sick. So I have lots of answers to questions. If you've got questions about that sort of thing. I know that there's going to be some concern about the what happens if the trip gets canceled. I know that a lot of people were kind of burned on the 2020 trips. And EF Tours has actually said that if any families or you know, if anybody's still holding on to vouchers from then, they'll still honor them, even if they want to pass them to a family member or friend. So there's that. And then they've got tons of liability coverage that I can go over with you. I know I put it all in the proposal that I sent to Craig earlier. But there were a couple of other really cool things about it that that I was very impressed with in terms of making sure that they've got like a really robust family support plan for, just in case anything goes wrong. And then they also have opportunities for college credit through Southern New Hampshire, which I thought was cool. And let's see, there's the stuff about the support team. There's more stuff about the insurance. We would be offering some support with the funding in terms of fundraising. The kids would be able to have their individual fundraising pages through EF. And there's also opportunities for them to apply for scholarships. So the total cost, if they sign up sooner rather than later, the total cost is $3,849 and then that can be split into a payment plan. Either one of the payment plans that you can see on the screen, or they can do custom payment plans for families too. So our goal is to get 30 kids signed up to go. And if you want to check out our enrollment page from EF, you can take a look at our, our little thing there. Do you have anything? How did I do with time? Do you have anything you want to add, Paul?
You did well with time. Pronunciation of places could be a little better, but that's just me.
I'll learn when I get there.
Absolutely. No, it's, it's, the opportunity to travel is one of the big things that we could offer. And I feel like we should be offering to provide some of that global perspective that we keep talking about. We should be allowing kids to travel safely as best we can to other places around the world to be able to explore. And so I, I think this is a great opportunity for our kids.
I agree. I agree. I think Randy's got a question?
Before Randy?
I just needed to get the unmute. It keeps disappearing on me. So a couple of logistical, first, let me start off with, I think these EF tour trips have been wonderful for kids. My son went on the Belize trip with Ms. Messina. It was a fantastic experience for him. I know many other students that went either to Galapagos Islands or to other places. And these trips over the years really have been very good for the students that have been able to take advantage of it. I'm assuming that this is part of the English department, going and seeing England and I guess, you know, it can fit into English or history. Because I know Ms. Messina usually tied it into the science when she offered these. Now for a couple logistical things with this is we do have a policy called our numbered or lettered JJF student travel. And there's a couple of things. I'm trying to think with the data. So you are within the one year on when we need to be notified of this. But if you have enrollment open and you've already started advertising this, that is against the policy. No, it's just, it's just you have the page that's open when you work with them. Okay. Just wanted to make sure about that.
Yeah, yeah. No, we had gotten an email from Brad saying that he would be open to having us do a trip that was unaffiliated with the school district. So, you know, so we created the website totally unaffiliated and all that. And then he said, well, wait a second, hang on, why don't you present it to the school committee? So we kind of pulled it back and we do have like 11 kids, I think, that have viewed it. But, you know, we haven't advertised it. So obviously we don't, we'll, we'd have more if we had advertised.
There's, there's a lot of requirements that are in there. And if I remember correctly, EF Tours being that they create the itinerary, do the food, the lodging and all the travel plans makes it much more difficult to stay within all of the requirements that we have. And so typically it has been run as a non-sponsored trip. And as a non-sponsored trip, the school committee neither approves nor denies the trip. We do love hearing about the opportunities for students. But there are, I'm not sure if this would be able to fit in with the number of chaperones you have going with other requirements about Cory for everybody and some of the safeties. There's a whole long policy on it. So if you cannot meet all of those requirements through EF Tours, then I would suggest this be a non-sponsored trip.
Thank you. Yeah, I really appreciate that, Randy. And thank you for your kind words about travel. Paul's done an international trip before. I have not. So I'm, I'm extremely excited about getting this off the ground and running it as a community trip. I'm happy to do that. Obviously I'd rather have it be a school sponsored trip. I think it's a great selling point for our school. I think it makes us look great. I did take a look at the long, long policy and we had started plugging in the like kind of our, our proposal to all of those things. I sent that to Brad and Craig. I didn't know like how intensive you wanted for a presentation for tonight. So, but I, I do have that. So if you wanted to take a look at that, I'm happy to email that to you and see if that's, you know, meeting your requirements, or if there's anything else that I can do to meet your requirements, I'm, I'm more than happy to do that.
Um, I would certainly be happy to take a look at that. And I would certainly suggest it to reach out to Ms. Messina, who has a lot of experience in organizing, in organizing this and has run a very tight ship on getting all the information to everybody and getting students there organized, safe and everything else. And I'm sure there's a number, a couple of other teachers that have done these international trips as well. So use their knowledge.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, I did, I had a long meeting with Lauren. So.
Anyone else with questions? So June?
Yeah, I have just a few things to say. One, I do think it would be an incredible experience for the kids. We were lucky enough to actually go to London last month. So you can ask Lila about Westminster Abbey and Windsor Castle and stuff. It was, it's really so good for them to see something like that at their age because it's so different from here. So it's a great experience for them. That being said, never having seen a trip like, you know, from the school or anything besides DC, DC I already got sticker shock from, but seeing the, the price on this, I don't know, you know, how many families could seriously look at that, which I'm sure it would be wonderful, you know, for some families and some will jump on it, but I, I do feel like it does exclude a portion of our student population, just because the price is so high, even with the fundraising. But I guess my only other question, so I have those two comments, but my own question is I was looking at the itinerary and I know on a couple of spots, it's like explore on your own or optional excursion. Is there any point that the students are actually on their own, unchaperoned? Or will there be a chaperone with them at all points?
Oh, there will be a chaperone with them at all points. We will not leave them alone in a country.
That was my thought, but I just wanted, just the wording of it when I said exploring your own, I was like, wait, what? So, thank you.
Yeah, it's more, it's more the EF tour guide gives us a little bit of freedom to go and explore something that maybe not necessarily is on their itinerary, but we as a group have the chance to go and explore something different.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that.
Thanks, Paul. Yeah, I, I completely understand your concerns about the cost. It is, you know, I mean, it, it does feel prohibitive for some families. There's $100,000 worth of scholarships that EF Tours has out there that the application is basically a two-minute video of like why you should get the money. So that's really nice. And then the fundraising options that they have, I, I thought that they were pretty robust, you know? And then we can also do fundraising. Like the kids can do fundraising with, it's almost like a GoFundMe, but not with a fee. So they have that option. And then we have the opportunity that, you know, we would be able to do fundraising as a group to see what we can do. So I, I do understand that. The 11th graders that I talked to were kind of breaking, I mean, this is like family friends, obviously not the students, but they were kind of breaking it down like, well, how many hours would I have to work to get 300 bucks a month, you know? And it was like doable. So you know, I mean, it's, it is something that it, it feels like a lot, but if you've got a kid who's working and the parents put that on the student, I mean, you know, we were, when I was a kid, we were broke, broke. And my brother went to, went on two trips that he paid for by washing dishes at a restaurant, you know? So I mean, it, it, I think that the opportunity is so valuable that the kids who find it worthwhile will be able to, you know, figure out a way to, to afford it through a combination of scholarships, fundraising and working.
But that's a good point. It does give them something to, to. But that's a good point. It does give them something to, to work towards and, you know, see the value of money of earning something. Um, my other question, um, so would this be open, I, I know it said grades ten through twelve and perhaps grade nine with a chaperone, just is it any students, is it like a cer- certain department, or I know Randy mentioned English department offering it or, or something like that? Is it, is it just open to everybody essentially?
I would feel comfortable with it open to the, the, I don't think it needs to be my students specifically. I think that the kids um, especially the, this year's group that missed out on the DC trip and they haven't gone anywhere. I really want to have, I, I want to maximize the opportunity so that the kids who really want to travel do get that opportunity.
Thank you.
Any other question? Oh, Tom?
Um, yeah, thanks for presenting, Don and Paul. I think um, just occupational hazard, um, thinking about like liability. I, Don, I know you mentioned it. I don't, I don't know if this is a question for you guys or for the superintendent, just thinking about, you know, whether or not this is a school sponsored trip or not, what, what does that liability look like, I guess?
Yeah, that, that's a, that, oh, sorry, Brad, I don't mean to interrupt. Um, did, did you want to take that or have another question? Cause I, I've got, I, I did talk with Maga EF Tours about that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it, it'd be interesting to hear what you got for a response, Ms. Chapel. I did, I mean, I can certainly share with the committee what I received from the district's legal counsel. Um, and I believe I shared that, I, I believe I shared it with you. I may not have shared all of it, but I certainly um, most of it, but basically it, it's my understanding that anything that is run in any way, shape or form through the school district, um, the school district would share some level of liability, and that's just coming from, again, not, from our legal counsel, meaning that even if the district does not support or um, the district says for the high school team to go and, and do this on their own without school committee approval. It's, it literally comes down to if school committee, excuse me, if school district emails are used for students or staff, if the school district building is used to host meetings or anything is promoted on social media, on, on school social media sites, then it does appear as though the school district would have some liability. So it was advised by us, uh, well, excuse me, by our legal counsel that if, if in fact this does end up being a separate trip, that all meetings occur off school grounds. Uh, promoting the trip occurs off school grounds, emails would have to go to student private emails, staff private emails that are organizing the trip, and even then there would still be no guarantee, but certainly less of a, um, less of a threat as far as liability goes on the school district. So that's, that's the information that I received from Dom and Allo Hillman, um, and then that law group who, who again represents the school district.
Yeah, thank you, Brad. I, I understand when you put it that way, you know, I certainly understand the hesitation. Um, what EF Tours was saying is that they have a very robust insurance policy. Um, they've got a fifty million dollar liability policy, they've got individual um, policies, they've got a whole plan for um, you know, emergencies and health concerns, and if a kid gets like hospitalized, where they'll fly the parents in um, to, you know, have a chaperone stay with the kid, have the parent, until the parent can get there, and they'll do all that on their dime. Um, so it, it did, you know, there was a lot to it. Um, some of the stuff that I had sent to you, the initial stuff, it was like, you know, there's like a twenty-five page document and seven pages of it were about the liability, the liability insurance and, and different protection policies. And um, you know, honestly, that was one of the huge reasons why when I started looking into this, why we picked EF was because their insurance policies were so robust. And my, you know, I understand that there was the um, the issue with kids not getting home refunds or, you know, getting vouchers that then they couldn't use because the pandemic went on. Um, but in terms of the liability for the school district, EF seemed to be um, you know, really, really good about taking on the liability for themselves and not putting that liability on the um, either the tour, the group leaders or on the um, school district. And she did say that about half of the tours are unaffiliated and half are affiliated with schools. So, you know, I'm, I'm not sure if maybe some of these other school districts have a lot, legal counsel that's less, you know, that, that's like, you know, less risk averse. Um, but she did say that about half of the, half of the trips are affiliated with schools. So, you know, again, I mean, I'm happy to do it, however, it makes sense. I wanted you guys to have the opportunity to hear about it. And, you know, if it, if it turns out that it's going to be not affiliated with the school district, we're certainly willing to work within all those parameters.
Awesome, thank you.
Any other questions from the committee? All right, um, well, Miss, uh, Randy, go ahead.
Just one more. Um, I, I see that uh, you're taking buses from city to city. Are these chartered buses or um, and do we know which company that they use?
Yeah, my understanding was that they, um, the buses that are within the cities, that there may be, um, like if we're in London, there may be some transportation that's public transportation, but the long trips are going to be chartered. And I did not ask what company, but it's a, she said that everything that they use is something that they're, you know, it's a partner with them, that they're, they, they consistently use the same companies. But I can certainly find that out if, you know.
Anyone else with questions? All right, Mr. Chapel, Mr. Thompson, I appreciate you coming forward with this. I, I mean, I personally think it's a great opportunity for students. I think it helps again, position our district as uh, offering a little more and, and certainly I'm, I'm a fan of, of this. The liability piece I am a little concerned about. I, I'm just thinking back to my own days in high school when um, they had international trips and there were, there were issues with, with, with students and whatnot, what, what that could possibly put back on the district. So that is a concern of mine. I, I wish we could find a balance between a full sponsored trip and then just a non-sponsored trip where we're not able to communicate to the audience that we want to go on these trips. So I don't know if there's some wiggle room there where, I mean, we've got other groups up until recently, we've sent flyers out to our school, to our students and whatnot, so um, I'm not sure why we wouldn't be able to communicate out and, and, and say that this is not affiliated with or sponsored by the district, but it's still something we want to offer. But um, I mean, that's kind of where, where I said, I think it's a fantastic opportunity and I'd love to see as many students as possible take advantage of it.
Great, yeah, thank you. We really appreciate the opportunity to come and share.
Does anybody want to make a motion or? I guess at this point, um, Ms. Chapel, this is currently as, as it stands right now, an, an unaffiliated trip, correct? Okay.
Yeah, in, in order to get the, the discounted price, um, the EF, EF did want us to try to start a year ahead of time.
Right.
Um, the, the longer that we wait, obviously the more expensive per month it's going to be. Um, so there's that aspect of it, but um, I, you know, I, I read the policy and I do want to make sure that we're respecting the rules that um, you know, that we not, if it is a school sponsored trip, that we're not in doing anything with enrollment until after we get the go-ahead. So it's, yeah, so we're kind of in limbo a little bit.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, June?
Um, I also have your question, Craig, about the communication. Um, would it be possible, Brad, for you to go back um, to the lawyer and just see if, you know, something is sent out that, that like specifically very clearly states that it is not school sponsored, is it possible to send through the school channels such as email? Because I do think it would be very difficult to communicate with families without access to their emails um, and, or handing out physical paper in school or anything like that. So if it's very clearly states that, you know, it's not a school sponsored event, you know, perhaps that would be a compromise.
I can check on that, sure.
Yeah, one, one thing that I think it's sort of analogous to is some of these um, other opportunities from, for example, um, like the Young Writers Conference that is through Juniper or um, some of these um, like summer college programs where, you know, they have the opportunities to go do, you know, like engineering camp at BU or whatever. Um, and obviously, we're not going to have the kids use their school email to email BU because they're not going to be able to receive outside emails anyway. Um, but we've always been able to say, okay, here's this opportunity that we would like you to know about, even though it's not affiliated with the school. Um, so I mean, I'm happy to have a email that's, you know, chapel U K trip twenty twenty-four at Gmail, that's not at all the school um, and have a Google Classroom that's not through the school and make it really super obvious that it's not through the school at all. Um, but I would absolutely love to be able to say to the kids, this thing exists, this opportunity is happening. It's not through the school, but it's happening. I think that that would be, um, you know, it would be much more equitable than just the, the people who I happen to know in my neighborhood, sharing it with people that they know, you know?
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that and I, I think, and, and Brad, I don't know if it was, it was you or, or someone else uh, had commented about emails and meetings and things like that. I mean, we've got unaffiliated groups that use our buildings for meetings, for activities that aren't school related. So again, if there's something specific we need to communicate, if there's language we need to add to the flyers, um, all for that, just to make it clear that uh, to parents that this is, this is not a North Middlesex sponsored activity and it's just an activity that is open to North Middlesex high school students. Um, so whatever the language is, I, I think if we could look into that and, and just make sure that Ms. Chapel, if you're giving a presentation, that the first thing you say is, tension audience, this is just a reminder to not affiliate a trip. Um, and make it clear, I, I, if that addresses the liability piece with uh, with the lawyers, uh, and the legal team, I think that, that would be a good middle ground.
I mean, I'm, I'm also happy to have the meetings virtually at night from like my house and have it be really obvious, like, I'm not at school. You know, I think that that, in some ways, that's even more convenient for the families. So we can do that too.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good idea.
But I,
I can, I can look into all that, that's not a problem.
Okay. Um, unless anybody feels differently, I'm, I'm not hearing that there's a, a requirement um, or huge benefit to making this a district sponsored activity. Um, so if anyone on the committee wants to make that motion, I would say now is the time, otherwise, um, I think pending uh, just some clarification on the legal language on, on how this gets communicated out, it, it seems like I'm seeing a couple heads now that this, this can continue as a non-affiliated trip. Um, we'll get some clarification on the language that needs to be included, just to make sure that from a liability perspective, the district is covered. And then uh, we'll do our part to make sure that as many kids as possible have the opportunity to, to experience this, because again, I think it's fantastic and um, affiliated or not, I think it's a, a good uh, opportunity for, for North Middlesex, just to kind of showcase the opportunities available, sponsored or not.
Thank you, Craig. I really appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely. Any other comments from the committee? If not, I don't, uh, I don't think we need to take action if we're already in the unsponsored mode. All right. Well, Ms. Chapel, Mr. Thompson, appreciate the time. Um, thank you for bringing this forward and um, I, I guess the action superintendent, you'll follow up, we figure the next few days, week?
I'll, I'll follow up tomorrow. As soon as I get a response, I'll, I'll let the committee know.
Okay, awesome.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, we'll move on to subcommittee reports. I don't see, I don't see any old business, um, accelerator repair, Lisa, any update?
No.
Um, Ashby Building Committee, June?
Um, yeah, our last meeting, we met in person at Ashby Elementary with the Ashby Building Inspector and the acting county administrator, and we walked out, walked around with them and um, kind of identified some action items to start with, and we have a meeting tomorrow, so we'll follow up on that.
Excellent. Um, seeing no questions, uh, communications, Tom?
Uh, nothing at the moment.
Anything from negotiations and personnel?
Well, nothing for, nothing for open meeting now.
All right, thank you. Uh, finance, Lisa?
Yes, um, we had a meeting on Thursday and we're bringing forward three items that I think, Brad, do you want to present them or they're in the packet?
Sure. Um, so again, in just looking at the, the, the current budget increase of six point two seven percent in, in the need for an override, uh, the, the committee did look at um, other options to potentially reduce the budget. And we came up with essentially um, three options. One of them uh, has um, has an option, the component that I'll talk about. Um, and Nancy Haynes, I believe, is on the call, uh, who's, who's currently on, on vacation, so she's remote. So thank you, Nancy, for joining to help me out with this. But option one reduces the six point two seven percent increase to a four point seven seven percent increase. And that um, basically entails a reduction of nine staff members um, in the district, um, as well as the reduction of one school bus. And um, part of the, a part of the help in getting this down was the fact that we heard some good news from GIC, where our regular health insurance increased by thirteen point seven five percent. We actually received um, essentially a lower number from GIC in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars for FY twenty-four. So, so that certainly helped. Um, certainly some of the positions that with, that we are proposing to reduce of the nine were positions that were added into the budget as either part of COVID or as um, part of, um, part of a need that we felt uh, would be necessary next year. We certainly made some adjustments and feel as though again, that we could potentially save the district, um, the current budget, nine hundred and twelve thousand dollars, six hundred and sixty-four dollars, again, bringing the budget increase down to a four point seven seven percent. That is option one. Option two, yeah, has, has um, has a B option as well, which doesn't lower the budget, but it does lower town assessments. Um, option two, uh, would bring the budget down to three point five four percent. Um, in addition to the nine positions we've already talked about, um, we would also be reduce, reducing, um, excuse me, two additional positions in the district, um, potentially three. Actually, I'm, I'm sorry, I misread that. Yes, the two positions in the district, this very small font that I'm looking at right now, um, and then utilizing additional S R funds, five hundred thousand dollars in S R funds, and utilizing an additional three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in E and D, which would bring our E and D use up to seventy-eight percent. Um, so again, bringing our E and D almost up to two point four million dollars um, to help assist with the budget. Uh, the only difference would be, and again, this is a three point five four percent budget increase, utilizing S R funds that will disappear at the end of next year, um, is that the secondary option would be just not using additional E and D. Um, and that would essentially keep the budget um, increased the same at three point five four percent, but would lower the um, town assessments. So again, brings that number down a little bit to make it a little bit more manageable. Um, option three, which is an option that I, that I really do not want to entertain, but i- it's an option that's out there would result in a two point nine six percent budget increase, would um, use all of E and D and all of the remaining S R. And all of the remaining Esser funds. Um, and the re, I, I guess a way to look at this uh is that if we don't use E and D and we don't use Esser. That would likely equate to staff. Uh, the only way that we can avoid an override in all three towns would be to reduce the budget by three million dollars. So that's really. The point that we are at. Um, I, I did speak with, with Desi last week, uh, Bob Bell, who's the Chief Financial Officer at Desi. Um, shared with him some concerns that I have, as I've shared with all of you, I've reached out to the governor's office, still have not heard back. Um, from the governor's office, but it is very troubling that. Um, during, you know, in a post-COVID environment, where we had to add fifteen staff members. Between last year and going into this year's budget. Um, to address student needs that North Middlesex was only awarded an additional ninety two thousand dollars. In chapter seventy monies, when other districts very close to us received a couple of million dollars or several hundred thousand dollars. Um, the thing that's really impacting us is the size of our student population, but in reality. Um, we too have students that have needs. We have, as I've talked about before. Uh, little to no commercial tax base, so it is on the backs of the taxpayers. And we, the positions that we've added, we certainly need, but. In reality, if we do have to make reductions, the budget is set up so that there's really uh very little um contingency money in the budget. We have a very slim curriculum budget, very slim professional development budget. Um, often, uh, both of those areas are funded through grants. Uh, that the district has received uh to, to help compensate for. Um, the low amount of money that we put into those line items, but to me, um. You know, I'd certainly like to see us consider something that would get our budget down a little low. Um, I don't think option three, again, the three million dollar reduction is something that the district um. Can sustain. I, I, I don't think we would, we would have much um left over if that were the case. Um, and again, I, I would certainly, if, if we are going to look at something, I would look at. Either option two or option one. Um, and of option two, I, I would, you know, if it's something the committee entertains, I would recommend using less E and D. To bring the assessment down because eventually, again, if we're using E and D, we're using S or we're using one-time funds. That is eventually going to catch up to us and, and it has, and that's something that the district has. Has done for a while now and it has caught up to us. So I see Ms. Haynes has her, has her hand raised, so feel free.
Uh, yes, I just wanted to clarify that the option two B that we were discussing reduces the amount of E and D. Being used, so it actually increases the assessments.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misspoke.
Just wanted to make, make sure everyone understood what they're.
But lowers the E and D.
Right.
Makes sense the other way.
It is, it's inverse, yeah, thanks.
Did the uh Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Just to share all three options, I don't know, Lisa, if, if you want to add, I, I, I didn't get a feeling that option three. Was something that anyone wanted to consider.
No, I think option three was one that the committee did not want to consider, but we did want to pass all three options forward. And to allow the committee to decide.
Is there? Um, is there a reason we couldn't use the five hundred K in Esser from option two and, and not have to reduce nine headcount? From option one?
Um, so there's. An option one.
Cause it looks like an option two, five hundred K equates to additional eight FTE, so if we reduce by one FTE in option one. And use the five hundred K. Does that not get us to the same place?
Looks like that's in addition to the savings after one. So it's after eight. And then with the five hundred K, right? The way I'm reading it.
So well, the, 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 the five hundred K. Would in essence, um, it, it, again, we put eight staff. But that's um, in that eight staff is based on um, you know, uh, the average salary. So it's a figure that we use. It's not necessarily a definitive salary. Um, and it could actually be less depending upon if people take benefits or not. Um, but that's, that's certainly something that we could look at to potentially add. You know, it, it, it may be an idea to potentially also combine it with option one, just, just the Esser money in option one. And, you know, i- 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 consider. Consider some reductions into, um, you know, some, in addition to the other savings. Of we've again reorganized something that's not on this document, but we've made. A reorganization at Central Office that saved us some money. We pulled um, a projected um need for another, for another assistant principal off the table. Uh, the GIC savings, so it's certainly something we could look at, the bus savings. Um, the problem with option one is that it really doesn't get. Uh, I don't believe any three, any one of the three towns to a point where all three wouldn't need an override. Option two. Um, Nancy, I think that there was some hope in option two that uh an override would not be necessary in all three towns. Am I correct on that? Based on our current calculations?
Yeah, I believe it's going to be close. A lot closer than we are at the moment. Um, so yeah, Craig, that, I mean, it could be an option is to do option one. And then also swing the Esser money. Um, and, and put positions in Esser for one year. Um, that could be an option.
All right.
The, the only problem is going to be is that by using S or an option one. It is going to, just like it will in option two, catch us.
Yeah, it's, it's one time solution.
Right. As was uh having the towns tell us to use E and D the last couple of years as much as we did, but that's a whole other story.
Yes, I am, I actually was able to listen in on the last Finance Committee meeting, so I got to hear some of the reasoning behind this and stuff. But I, my big concern, especially where we as a committee would be voting on this. Is what exactly all of these positions are. There's forty one full-time positions here. Um, so, I mean, that, that's got to have an impact on the kids at some point somewhere. So it's really hard for us to make a decision and draw the line without knowing what is cut. Um, about ten years ago or so, our specials were on the line. Um, and families rallied very, very hard to retain those, um. Art, music, stuff like that. It's, it's so important that these things aren't cut from the kids, so. I want us to be very aware when we're making decisions that. You know, to, to not just look at it as a, a number FTE. We have to know what this is. I don't want. Curriculum or offering cut from our students, um particularly in like arts, music, drama, that kind of thing. So I really, um, you know, I, I understand why it's not being said in a public forum. But I would hope that the committee would be given that information before we make any decisions on this.
Thank you, June. Uh, Randy?
Other things to um consider is um. The more one-time money we use this year. The larger the assessment increase is next year. Cause our budget isn't gonna uh stay at a zero percent next year, and then they have to make up. So next year, if we use our E and D and the, any more amount of it, if we use any of the Esser money. To uh supplement uh our budget this year, then right off the bat. Before our budget increases one cent. Their assessments are already going up by that amount. Um, and then you need to add on top of that whatever our budget increases are for next year. Um, so that's one reason why I am against um using some of this one-time money. Uh, we also have to be very careful about using all of our reserves. Um, this is our. Money for something goes wrong in the district. A boiler goes and we're not expecting it. We don't have the money to fix it. We have damage from a storm that needs to get fixed. We don't have money in reserves. Um, additionally, our reserves um. Affect our bond rating potentially, and we do have some more bonds that we need to go and get the loans for. Um, higher rates are going to cost the, you know, may save them right now to use our E and D. Higher rates on our debt for long-term debt is going to cost the towns more money. Um, it's kind of a balancing act. We not need to do with that. Um, we, we have been. Um, kind of really on a tight, tight budget, we have been cutting and cutting and cutting. Um, we need to. You know, go to the state, they need to. To give us more money um for some of these increases with inflation and things like that. Um, yeah, I, I don't wanna, I, I wish that we can just go up to the state and. Uh, like an ATM and uh have them give us the money that we deserve. Um, and I'd like to see what they're going to come up with. I know they had an announcement that they're looking to give a little bit, but we have zero clue. About what the distribution is. We may get, you know, another. Fifty thousand dollars out of this latest uh announcement of money going to the districts. With any luck, we're going to have some extra money and at that point I'd be happy to uh revisit what we have. I think the GIC, I think the bus savings should come right off the top, no questions asked. Any other um positions right now to reduce, we really need to scrutinize. Um, they may not. Um, you know, directly affect um students at the moment, but you know. At the limit we, or at the, at the point we are right now, um, just taking away and putting. Um, you know, support staff and putting on um. Responsibilities onto people who already have a full boat could be affecting students. I don't think we're at a point really. To um reduce our staff at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Anybody else's comments?
The, the, the only other thing that I, that I did want to add in this, this did come up at finance. Was that um, the, and Randy had um, had mentioned it, was it Friday, there was word from the state in the governor's supplemental budget. That we may be getting some access to additional funding to help with the fourteen percent increase for out of district. Uh, placement students. Um, I, I don't see, you know, that, that could certainly help us. Um, there's a possibility that we won't get anything. Um, it is, um. Ms. Rush said that the problem is, is that with this budget, even with the, even with the reductions. Is that we do not have any contingency monies. Should we have um in, an increase in a particular area where we are um mandated. To address it and, you know, uh, the, the out of district savings, you know, if that were to, to come to fruition. And we may not know about that until after our budget is passed. I would, I would. Tend to see that money being used um towards additional students that may need to be placed. Out of district, or if we have to hire an additional um. One-to-one aid or something along those lines. Uh, historically, at least for the, for the, for the years I've been here, we've had a couple of hundred thousand dollars in the budget. Um, that I call contingency, and again, that, that is generally reserved for issues like I just spoke about. This budget does not have any contingency funds at all. Um, so we would have to use um district reserves or one-time funds. To fund those positions, which again will become a part of our budget likely the following year. And a lot of these positions, we don't even know about until, until the summertime, if a, a student moves in and. Um, we may have to hire someone for, for that particular student. So ju- ju- just something, something to keep in mind. I, I, I do agree, I don't think we should be using our one-time funds. Um, I do not, I, I would not be in favor of using additional E and D. Um, but tha- that's a, that's a decision that the committee, um, that the school committee really has to make. Um, Esser funds, you know, again, it's, it's, it's dangerous because. Those, we will have to make that money up the following school year. And it will become a part of our budget, so.
I'm sorry, two points I, I, I missed before was um that Esser money, as well as if we use it towards our budget, is taking away from programs. To try and help children uh or some of our students recover from. The pandemic, I believe we had a couple of programs that we're going to be using that money for, that we would not have those additional programs for. If we use it for our budget. Additionally, if this is a tough year. Um, for families for the state with the inflation and everything, then we can't discount nine C cuts that the state can make mid-year. And those are funds that we would need to make up. And again, our E and D is where we do. Uh, make up uh any kind of cuts like nine C cuts, which have happened in the past. It is not something that um has never happened. We have had to make that up. So we need some reserves.
Any other comments from folks on the committee? All right, um. I guess Lisa, I'll go back to you in terms of. Finance Committee, what? Do you want to make a motion or? Do you want to not make a motion and stick with what we have?
Well, I do think that we do have to bring our budget down. Um, our towns are telling us that they can't afford this. Our taxpayers are telling us to. Um. But it's hard because there are some different options that even that were discussed tonight that we could come back with. Um, but I hate prolonging things too, because it puts us. It makes our district kind of nervous. Um.
I mean, if you want to take it back to the committee based on tonight's discussion and. We can either call a special meeting or, or, I mean, wait until April tenth is.
I mean, we do have a meeting April sixth, but. I don't know. Brad, any thoughts?
Uh, the, the, the only, I mean, I think the biggest concern that, that I have is that. It's, I don't see, um, I, I don't see the override. Being something that is done on the town meeting floor unless, unless I'm mistaken. I'm like, I, I'm guessing it's likely going to be. A, a special ballot question that would take place in early June and. I, i- if that, if, if it doesn't pass, it's obviously going to put the district in a very, very. Difficult spot, a- again, with regard to, to programs and the, the fact that we would likely have to reduce. If we don't obtain additional funding by about three million dollars. I, I think it's actually just north of three million dollars in the three point one range. Um, that gives us very, very little time if it doesn't happen until early June. To deal with any potential reductions that may need to occur just by state statute, which is uh June fifteenth.
All right, do your hand up again.
Yes, uh, just one point on that, if the budget does not pass or they don't uh put it to override. Our next steps would be to come here and reduce it not by the three million. But we need to reduce it by one dollar or more and bring it back to them, and we can keep bringing it back to the towns. Um, until we get a budget. Um, we have done that before. I hate to see us try and do that. It does delay a whole lot of. Um, programming and going forward in the district. Um, but rather than devastate our uh school district. We just, you know, cutting the three million, I think we need to try. Uh, we have to go, we have to hear what they say, we have to give this a, a good shot on trying to get uh what we need for these students. And figure out a way that's going to be best uh that the towns aren't cutting. Um, all of their services, because those are very, very important, uh, just as much as the schools are. Um, it's just unfortunately uh the timing, and I think this is needed. Um, as far as the, reducing the budget, um, I would be very happy to make a motion tonight to reduce it by the two hundred thousand for the GIC. And the amount for uh the one bus, I think everyone can agree that that should come right off, because those were savings that we did not anticipate having. And I'm happy to give that back um and take that out of the budget.
Is that a motion, Randy?
Um, I would need the exact amount. Uh, I believe the bus was something like seventy eight thousand and change, so. I can make the motion, yeah, but uh having that uh. I can make the motion, but having that exact number from Nancy would be very helpful. Let's put you on the spot, Nancy.
The, I have the exact figure for the bus, I do not have the exact figure for GIC. The bus was 71,564.
And the GIC is 200,000.
200 flat, okay, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, just use that, that'll be fine. And then, so we would be, just give me one second, I can get the actual operating number. The transportation changes the formula a little bit, so I just need to run that, if you can get, just give me one, one second for a moment.
Brad, I didn't write that down, it was 71,000?
564, 564, 71, 564.
Okay, so there'll be 271,564 reduction.
Sorry, hang on one, it's just going to take me a minute, I gotta pull up a different, different seat, had all the options up and I gotta make sure I'm on the right, the right one.
I mean, Randy, we could pull this back to Finance. I mean, if we want to just wait until, because maybe we'll come up with some more options, who knows?
That's fine, I just didn't know if, for good faith, we wanted to have that voted, that voted in or not.
Given that we have several numbers to deal with here in the millions, I think we should maybe pull it back and wait on it.
The other thing that potentially happened, just jumping in here, is that some of these changes that they're proposing, they could actually come out with how, how the district may or may not be affected by that, which would potentially be in the positive also. So then we would be voting again in a very short amount of time to take advantage of that savings.
So when, Nancy, do we have to have a number to the towns or are we past that and we have to change it on town, town floor?
I mean, they'll probably, I mean, some of them may be further down the road on their, their posting for town meeting. I'm not 100% sure where everybody's at with that and whether they've already put the language in their warrant for an override, in which case those numbers could be amended through the motion of the budget adoption on town meeting floor. Or if it gets there in time, they'll just amend, they'll just change the motion for us, so it'll be ready to go. So it won't be, you know, changing it on town meeting floor can be a messy proposition, so we'd try to avoid that. We try to get all the information to everybody ahead of that. So my suggestion would be that if you decide, usually by mid-April is when they're going to print. So I think you have a little bit of time, but I understand it's, if you, if you want to do something tonight, it's not a problem. It'd just take me a minute or two to, to get those numbers pulled together.
I think we can wait as it's getting close to nine o'clock for everyone, and we have some more things to discuss. If that's okay with everyone.
I couldn't agree more. June, do you have a comment?
Yes, since Finance Committee is going to come back to us with options, I'm asking that somehow they communicate to all of the school committee members exactly what these full-time positions are that would be cut. I know that it, you know, it, it's not to be announced like in a public meeting without, you know, any decisions being made, but there should be the communication to, to everybody that is making that decision to know exactly, you know, what the consequences of our choice will be. So I'm asking that you would please do that for the next time. Thank you.
Thank you, June. All right, if there's nothing else on that item, then we will move on. Also, Lisa, you had anything else from Finance?
Not at this time.
All right, thank you. Randy, policy?
Okay, for policy, first thing I just want to mention is on regional agreement, we're still not 100% through that. We are working through it on all of the changes that were, from the DESE and John Foskett, our attorney, has turned into our regional agreement. One big issue that we're still grappling with is the student or the school committee representation. There are two models that we're kind of looking at, is one, we can keep everything the same as we have it right now, which is the three members from Pepperell, two members from Townsend, one from Ashby, and three at-large members. But we would need to have weighted voting. And there's a couple of different scenarios that we can look at that, slightly different numbers, but they all basically come out about the same. And, and we would have to go with the weighted voting. What weighted voting does is different positions have either a 1.0 vote or a 1.1 vote, and we'd have to tally them up. The other option is to change the configuration of the school committee. And it would probably look something along the lines of four members from Pepperell, three from Townsend, one from Ashby, and one at-large member would potentially work for one person, one vote. But we are kind of working out on the policy subcommittee what we would recommend, but we'll bring all the options to the full committee when we have the full document. But I want to make everybody aware of what we're looking at, so you can start kind of thinking about, you know, pros and cons, and any comments can come to me, so we can consider them. On to policies, we do have two policies for a first reading. We have policy CB, which we currently have the Regional School Superintendent. This is one that since we had it back in 2011 approved, the MASC actually has split it in two, which is what we did. So CB, Regional School Superintendent, just basically talks about hiring and the Mass General laws on employing the superintendent. And then the second policy is CBI, which is the evaluation of the superintendent. There's only one change that we made in here from the MASC, and it was just slightly better language, but basically said the same thing as part of CB. But we had added in here that any new school committee member would need to be a member for four months of service during the current evaluation cycle to submit an evaluation. And any outgoing school committee members by vote of the school committee may submit an evaluation on their way out, just because of the timing of the evaluation and the elections of new school committee members. So I would move that we approve CB and CBI for a first reading.
Second?
All right, Randy, June, any questions, comments on this policy?
I do have one quick comment on CB, where it says annual reports to the selectmen of the member towns. If we could change that to select board members?
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Yep.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you, June. All right, any other questions, comments? All right, Dave?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, so those are approved for a first reading for the public. Those will be out on the district website for any comments or feedback to the, to the committee.
And the next policy is for adoption, and that is policy JQ-E, and this is on the Student Fees, Fines, and Charges Exhibition, which has the fee and ticket prices. So I move that we adopt policy JQ-E.
Second.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions, comments from anybody? All right, Dave?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
I'll vote yes, so that is unanimous, thank you. Next, Randy?
And the next policy is policy IJOA. And again, this is for a adoption, this is on field trips, where we put in the range of mileage before it needs to have a school committee approval for field trips. So I will move that we approve IJOA for adoption.
Second.
Give that to Jessica. All right, any other questions, comments on that policy? All right, Dave? Dave is gone. Jessica?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so that's unanimous, thank you. Anything else, Randy, on policy?
That is all for now.
All right. Moving on to Executive Session. I will take a motion at the school committee meeting, Executive Session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 201A, for the following purposes, purpose two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, the Director of Pupils' Personnel Services and the Superintendent of Schools. And purpose seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements. And that's for the approval of Executive Session minutes dated November 21, 2022.
Second, or take them, is that so moved?
So moved, there you go.
I'll second.
Thank you, Lisa. All right, so this is to enter Executive Session, Dave?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes, but you need to inform the public of whether we're coming back into session or not.
Yes, I will have to read that paragraph again and then I'll.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yep, appreciate it. Tom?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. The committee will now be meeting in Executive Session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 201A, with following purposes, purpose two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Director of Pupil Personnel Services and the Superintendent of Schools. And purpose seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements for the approval of Executive Session minutes dated November 21, 2022. The committee will be reconvening in an open session when we are done. So we will pop over to the other meeting and be back shortly. Thanks, everybody.